The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, March 20th, 7:00 PM. We will begin with the pledge. I'll ask Councilman Saunders to lead us. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, we have a couple of items we need to add to our agenda, so if I can have...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to add, under Section 8, reported to the Town Manager. Item 1, moving the other ones down, school renovation projects. Making financial dashboard number 2 and happenings number 3.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to add, under Section 11, item number 7, an 824 referral on the school renovations project, making the tax refunds number 8.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. We're all set with that. Moving forward, we do not have a public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting? I mean that in plural, meetings.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes of March 9th, 2017, regular meeting, and March 13th, 15th, and 16th, 2017, special meetings.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
One correction, Madam Chair. I think it was the March 9th meeting minutes referred to Scott Colby as an intern, and I think we should start referring to him as assistant to the Town Manager.
Assistant to the Town Manager. Okay. Anything else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements or reports? Does anybody have any announcements to make? No?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Appointments and resignations. Do we have any appointments or resignations tonight? There's none on our agenda, but I didn't know if there were any others that we should have to take care of. No? Okay. Moving on. Board of Education liaison, Mrs. Saunders?
You had passed me by. Hi, Andrea Saunders, 55 Fawn Drive. Just a couple of things. Number 1, I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Brummett had received some information from her superintendent's organization concerning their opposition to that House Bill 7050, which is the teacher's pension. So she passed on this information to Representative Pettit and Senator Martin, and they both replied to her. Representative Pettit said he would pass the information on, and that several senators have told them that they will never pass this bill as it is. And that, he said, the House Caucus had not totally committed but was leaning the exact same way. So that was good news. And Senator Martin said he would reinforce Cap's position, which is in opposition of it, to his caucus. So she's trying to stay on top of that, so we get the latest and greatest updated information. Okay. She also, the new, she said it was worth mentioning that there's a distinct possibility that the ECS money will remain the same as it was for this year pending the outcome of a study of a committee. Again, this is pending approval of the legislature, but this appears to be gaining more traction. So I guess they want to rethink the whole formula, maybe get a committee together, and then put something out, maybe next year, next January. Dr. Brummett says she's also going to be meeting with members of the EAP, the Education Association of Plainville Teachers Unions, on Tuesday and Wednesday this week after school. She said she'll be letting them know that where our budget stands, and that layoffs will be likely if the, if the state's budget passes after we pass our budget, and they do pass down that $2 million, that that will end up being a lot of layoffs. So she wanted to make sure that the EA, that teachers' union was aware of that. And I'm sure they're getting that from every town, so. Let's see. The school-wide, the townwide band show is March 29th at 7:00 PM at PHS. And at, at the show, they're going to have a table for the Wheeler project. So some of the architects will be there, Mr. Batshood will be there, and some parents, and they will be manning it to give anybody that's there at the concert information on the Wheeler renovation project. And I think that's all. Any questions? Or for superintendent, because she's here? All right. Thanks.
Oh, please. Thank you, Mrs. Saunders.
Just to clarify, the EAP meetings that I'll be doing tomorrow on Wednesday are really to let folks know that if the budget passes through the April 25th referendum, layoffs would be unlikely. So I'm hoping to calm the waters based on the fact that the budgets have been passed through the Town Council. Now, we're hoping that the town does approve those. So that would be my message on Tuesday and Wednesday to teachers. No problem.
Thank you. Okay. No report from the Town Attorney. So Town Manager's report. Mr. Lee?
Just a couple items. With regards to the school renovations project, under state statute, whenever a town is considering doing any long-term borrowing or bonding of monies, it requires that the Town Council refer the proposal to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to determine whether it is in accordance with the town's plan of conservation and development. This doesn't necessarily have to be done before the referendum is done, but it's just one of those things that I'd just like to get behind us, so we don't have to, you know, worry about not following all of the procedures. So that's the reason why it's been added to the agenda tonight, so that the Planning and Zoning Commission can take this up. They're not looking at whether the, you know, the design of the project, they're really looking into whether the, you know, the renovation of Wheeler Elementary School is in concert with the town's plan of conservation and development, of repaving of the, of the high school parking lot, same, same thing, so, and the roof at the middle school. So it's really just a procedural matter. I did also hand out to you this evening, and we'll try to get this up on the, on the Town webpage as soon as possible, the, kind of the, the meetings that are going to occur between now and the referendum, if it moves forward. On April 3rd, which is the next council meeting, you would set the public hearing date, which is required for the project. It's recommended that the public hearing date be on April 24th, which will be at Wheeler Elementary School, and it'll coincide with a tour that will happen at 6 o'clock, and actually, the public hearing will be at 7:00. So if anybody wants to come to the school and take a look at what's being proposed, they can get a tour of the building, and then the public hearing would be afterwards. And then the plan is for, if the council, you know, looks to, you know, move forward the project, that you actually set the referendum date at your meeting on May 1st. You would set the referendum date, which would occur on June 6th. And you'll also see, you know, some other meeting dates that are in there right now, where there'll be some presentations, like at the middle school. There's a superintendent showcase, which is, which I think there'll be a table there as well for, to answer questions that people might have on the project. That's all I had on that particular item.
Okay.
Next I have is the financial dashboard. And for one reason or another, this did not get posted on the Town webpage. I'm not sure how that happened. It was completed, I believe, Thursday, Thursday or Friday. But we'll make sure it gets up there tomorrow, but I will go through it nonetheless. I know council members have copies of this. These are expenditures through the end of February. The town budget, to date, or to, you know, through the end of February, we spent 64% of the budget, which is pretty, you know, pretty much 64% is what the two-year average is. So we're pretty much on budget as far as the overall town expenditures are concerned. The general government budget, 67% has been spent. Two-year average is 69%, so we're running a little bit behind what our two-year average is. Board of Education has spent 62% of their budget. Their two-year average is right around 60%. There's no line items that are significantly over there. That's just, just a timing issue, at least according to the, according to the Finance Director. So there's no, you know, items of any significance in the Board of Education's budget that there were, that's, that's, you know, going over budget or to be concerned about at this point in time. As far as the police overtime is concerned, we've spent all but $76, or $70,000 of the, of the $450,000 allocation. Actually, actually, some of those numbers are, have to be adjusted. I talked to Scott about it. We spent 440 of the $450,000 that has been budgeted so far. So we're, so there's only about $10,000 left. We're running above the two-year average by about $70,000. But you're aware of that. We've been talking about that for a while. Roadways overtime is, is $22,000 over budget right now. That's, and we, you know, that's not much change from, from last month, because that's the work that they do for leaves, and it's the work they do for, you know, doing the bonding project. Buildings and grounds overtime is running a little bit over budget as well. We reported on that last month. Roadways, snow overtime, this was at the end of February, we had spent 37 of the $40,000 that was budgeted. I'm sure the storms that we had in March put us over that, that line item as well. Buildings and grounds, snow overtime is, is running under budget as of the end of February. 16,000 spent, $23,000 budget. We'll see what March did to that as well. As far as our hauler tonnages, municipal solid waste, which goes to Covanta, we're running pretty much very close to the two-year average. On the revenue side, all revenues through the end of February, we've received 88.76% of our revenues that we've had budgeted. Our two-year average is 88.70%, so we're running pretty much in line with past years, these past recent years. Our current taxes, we've collected 98.46% of what was budgeted. That's a little bit higher than, than the two-year average by about, about a half a percent, at 97.9%. So revenues are pretty much on, you know, in line with what we had budgeted. Our fund balance, there's, there haven't been any changes from the last, from the last report. Our fund balance is estimated at a little bit over $9 million. As far as the special revenue funds are concerned, Recreation Fund is trending, on the expenditure side, pretty much where it has on the two-year average. Revenues, we received 64% of the budgeted revenues. Two-year average is 57%, so we're a little bit ahead of the game as far as revenues from the Recreation Fund. Robertson Airport, we've, we've spent about $10,000 more than the budget. I think partial, well, I know that a portion of that has to do with some of the grants that, that we've been working on, and, you know, those were not budgeted, because we're getting revenues to offset that, we just haven't received it yet. Our revenues are pretty much, we received 110,000 of our 199,000 that was budgeted. The percent received is, is a timing issue. We received 55% of what was budgeted. Two-year average is, is 75%, but that doesn't do with the timing on a payment. Most of our revenues come from, come from the fixed-based operator, and so, you know, they pay us on a monthly basis, and I'm sure that that's the issue with regards to that payment. Water pollution control, pretty much on budget on the expenditure side, pretty close to budget on the revenue side as well. Plainville Library expenditures, we've, same, percent spent, 72%. 71% is the two-year average. On the revenue side, they're running a little bit better than past years, at 75% compared to 70% on two-year average, so the Plainville Library budget is, is in line. As far as the health insurance fund is concerned, we, the January claims came in about 120, about, well, maybe about $110,000 higher than what was expected. But, but year-to-date, expected claims are running under, running under what, you know, what we have budgeted overall. So it's, you know, we usually get a little caught up as we get towards the last several months of the year. We build up a surplus to the beginning of the year, catches up towards the end of the year, but we're still running ahead of the game by about $750,000 in that particular The major projects, not much change to the major projects, because of, you know, the winter weather, you know, although, you know, we've had some work done at the Park Improvement Fund, I don't think any payments have been made to the contractor, you know, recently, and no changes to Turf Field Project, Old Lynn Street School demolition, Road Bond, or Cook Street Reconstruction, or the phosphorus removal project. So unless you have any questions on that report, I have another item.
Okay. Any questions for Robert so far? Okay. Thank you.
I also handed you this evening a summary of the budget recommendation that you made as a result of your work sessions last week. Basically, the, the charter requires it to be two questions to be put on the ballot, one for the total general government, and the other for the Board of Education. The total general government budget that you authorized, or recommended last week is a, is an increase of $203,999 or 0.89%. That includes the general government debt service, and what the general fund would contribute to the capital, capital account. Again, that's an increase of $203,999 or 0.89%. The Board of Education budget is an increase of $678,732 or 1.95%, which ends up being an overall budget increase of 882,731 and/or 1.53% from the current fiscal year on the expenditure side. We will be posting this on the website as well, and I know that later on in the meeting, you'll be setting the public hearing date for the, for the budget. So that's all I have to report on at this point in time. I would like to turn it over to Scott for happenings, and then answer any questions you may have.
I provided you all with a handout for an event that is being hosted by the Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development. They're going to be presenting a discussion at Forum on Substance Abuse in Our Families and Our Community on Thursday, April 6th, at 6:15 PM in the Plainville Middle School Auditorium. The forum panel, including Miriam Delphin-Rittman, Commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, will be present in an overview of some of the current substance abuse-related topics, and a discussion featuring state and local community leaders, persons in recovery, family members, and more. These panel members will share their knowledge, expertise, and personal stories regarding substance abuse, addiction, and recovery. Over at the Plainville Senior Center this month, they have quite a few events. The first one being Run Your Way to 5K informational meeting, being held Tuesday, March 21st, at 9:00 AM. It is being led by seasoned running coach, Rich Dillion. You will be able to successfully complete a 10-week couch-to-5K running program, which will combine weekly group workouts of run-walk interval training sessions. The program will culminate with the Amika Iron Horse Boulevard 5K race in Simsbury on June 4th. The training program officially begins on Tuesday, April 4th, at 9:00 AM, and will continue on Tuesdays until May 30th. Training sessions will leave from the Senior Center and will run through the Senior Center neighborhoods. The cost is $20, and includes training and a commemorative t-shirt. Please register for the information by contacting the Senior Center. Grandparents Raising Grandchildren is being held on Tuesday, March 21st, at 10:30 AM. If you are a grandparent or relative who is raising a grandchild, niece, or nephew, you are not alone. Funding for this program is made possible in part by the Older Americans Act through the North Central Area Agency on Aging. To attend, please call the Plainville Senior Center. Questions for a social worker is being hosted on Monday, March 27th, at 12:30 PM. For anyone who has questions in regards to Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare Part D, Medicare Savings Program, or housing options, just stop by Stephanie Soucy's office to have an individual conversation with her. Please note that this program is for Plainville residents 60 years of age or older, and no pre-registration is necessary for this. Veterans Coffee Hour is being hosted on Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:30 AM. This is an informational and support meeting conducted by Wayne Ru, a veterans liaison for the Hartford Healthcare at Home. Please call the Senior Center to register, as they do provide some refreshments. A 2017 legislative update with State Representative Dr. William Pettit and State Senator Henry Martin is being hosted at the Senior Center on Tuesday, April 4th, at 10:00 AM. Joined in the discussing of the topics that are shaping the 2017 legislative session on the state budget deficit and any state issues that are important to you. Please call the Senior Center to register for that event as well. Memory screenings at the Senior Center will be held on Thursday, April 6th, at 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM. Memory screenings are simple. They average 10 minutes, consist of questions and tasks to assess one's memory. Screenings will be done by Jennifer Doty. Please call the Senior Center to make an appointment. Now, over at the Plainville Public Library on Tuesday, March 21st, at 7:00 PM, they will be joined by Linda Coveney, Integrative Nutrition Health Coach for Let's Do This: Keys to Living a Healthy and Energetic Life. This is an interactive group format that will discuss simple strategies that someone can start doing today to change their ways of eating, you know, somewhat healthier lifestyle. On Wednesday, March 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the Plainville Public Library will be showing a movie called Trail Magic: The Grandma Gatewood Story. This documentary film tells the true story of Emma Grandma Gatewood, the first woman to solo through hike the Appalachian Trail in 1955 at the age of 67. On Thursday, March 22nd, at 7:00 PM, the library will be hosting the third in a four-part series on financial literacy. This session is focused on debt and budgeting, and topics include strategies to pay off your most expensive debt first, curbing your credit card spending, steps to creating a realistic budget, and answers to your questions. You will be joined by presenter Ashley Miles Upson-Hinney of Plainville's own Primerica for an informative and fiscally smart free workshop. They're not trying to sell you anything, they want to make sure that it's something for the residents to get a better understanding of their own financial concerns. On Saturday, March 25th, folks of all ages can drop by anytime between 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM to make cherry blossoms using plastic bottles and paint. On Wednesday, March 29th, at 6:30 PM, they are hosting a program entitled The People-Plant Connection presented by Jeff Elwald. Attendees will have a hands-on session planting tea seeds imported from China. Everyone will take home their own plant and seed to germinate and grow. Registration is required, please call the library. And on April 7th and 8th, the Friends of the Plainville Library are sponsoring the semi-annual book sale. Thousands of books, CDs, and DVDs will be on sale at bargain prices. Over onto Public Works, property owners will be able to schedule their one-time bulk pickup free of charge in either the spring or fall. The bulk collection for the 2017 season will take place on Mondays during the following periods from April 17th through June 26th. It will exclude Monday, May 29th, as that is a holiday. That pickup will be conducted on Tuesday, May 30th. And the fall collection will take place from September 11th to October 30th. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, please provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM Friday can be scheduled for a collection on Monday. Please note pickups must be scheduled by property owners if they live in a multifamily resident between two and five units. Bulk items should be placed curbside no more than 24 hours before your scheduled pickup. Bulk items must not block or create a safety concern for sidewalks or walkways. Bulk collection is for residential use only. Please keep your weekly trash separate, and miscellaneous iron steel separate from bulk. For a list of the acceptable bulk items, please visit the Town of Plainville Public Works page. If you have any questions, please contact the Public Works Administration. The hazardous waste collection for 2017 will be held on April 22nd behind the Plymouth Town Hall at 80 Main Street Terryville, and on May 6th at the Plainville Highway Garage at the end of Granger Lane. All residents are required to bring a photo ID when attending any of these collection locations. And the transfer station on Granger Lane will be opening for the season starting on Saturday, April 1st. The hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM Saturdays only. Plainville residents must show identification. There is a fee for disposal, and for a list of the acceptable items and fees, please visit the Town of Plainville website. That's all I have.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Short today.
What's happening?
Out of breath.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott in their reports tonight? Okay. All set? Thank you both. Okay. Moving on. Moving on to our public comments section of the meeting, during this time, we ask residents if they wish to come to the podium, either podium, tonight. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. I have one person that's signed up already. She will go first, Candace Hall. You're here?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm Candace Hall. I live at 113 Shuttle Meadow Road, and after talking with a real estate agent, I will be residing at 113 Shuttle Meadow Road for the foreseeable future. So one, one thing I wanted to bring to the council's attention is the fact that Plainville is not, does not have its own community emergency response team, which is, the acronym for that is C E R T, or CERT. It's a program run through Homeland Security, and volunteers are trained to respond in an emergency, to be of help to the police or fire department. When Hurricane Katrina happened, a lot of the people who went to help were members of these CERT teams from all over the country. Years ago, when there was a early snowfall, and a lot of places in Southington lost power, they had to open an emergency shelter at the Calendar House, and members of the CERT team took care of sponsoring that and making sure everything went, went well. It usually, the CERT teams are usually run through either the fire department or the police department, and we, as a volunteer, we do a lot of different things. On Saturday, I was out there... On Saturday, I was out there in the cold, early in the morning, at the Shamrock Run, making sure that automobiles did not run into the Shamrock Run runners. Uh, and I encourage Plainville to look into either associating with the Southington CERT or the Bristol CERT and have volunteers who will be able to respond in case of emergency.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council who has not signed up yet? Anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight? Last chance. Okay. Thank you for your comments. We'll close that part of our meeting. And moving on to new business.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing on April 3rd at 7:00 in the municipal center to hear public comment on the town council's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to set the location of the annual town meeting for the purpose of voting on the town council's proposed fiscal year 2018 budget at the Plainville Firehouse for Tuesday, April 25th, 2017, for the hours of 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to award bid number 2017-14E Construction Repairs and Adjustments of Catch Basin on Various Streets to DeCicio Brothers Weathersfield, Connecticut in the amount of $35,910.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number four?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution, Town of Plainville.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Town Manager Robert E. Lee as the Fair Housing Officer and authorize him to sign and implement the Fair Housing Policy Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number six?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to authorize the Town Manager to sign and implement the Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to submit an 824 referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review of the school renovations project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number eight?
I don't think we have any.
There were no tax refunds, so we're going to skip that. Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee? Do you have any other items of discussion?
Just a clarification on the, uh, Fair Housing Resolution, uh, and the Fair Housing Officer, and the Equal Opportunity Statement. Those are requirements, uh, in order to apply for the Small Cities Grants, and it's just a procedural. We normally do it in April, but because the grant application's going to go in, in a week or so, we wanted to have these updated, uh, in, in March, so that's just a procedural. As far as the, the award on the Catch Basin bid, we did get 11 bids, and, um, this is to assist in the Road Bond project, so, uh, just to clarify that. Uh, but that's all I have.
Anything else? Okay. Well, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks very much.